Welcome everyone to Tales from UVA to the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, sponsored by the Who's 2.0 Committee of the UVA Club of Washington. I'm Kim Somerville, a graduate from the McIntyre School of Commerce, and also a parent of a recent e-school graduate from this past May. My co-chair is Mary Ellen Matheson, who graduated from the college. You might be asking, what is Who's 2.0? We plan events for alumni, parents, and friends in the DMV of all ages, not just recent grads. We're excited to have so many of you join us this evening. We will be utilizing the Q and A box for questions, so don't hesitate to use that. A big thank you to Michael Getz, Josh Stewart, and Ashley Gresh from UVA's Office of Engagement for all their assistance. We're fortunate to have as our moderator this evening Sly Mata, Director of Diversity Education in UVA's Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Before we turn things over to him, Mary Ellen and I would like to acknowledge a double Who from the class of 1969 and 1972, David Temple, who was the genesis for tonight's program, so he can say a few words. David?
Thank you, Kim, and thank you all, and greetings fellow Who's. This is a very exciting evening for me. When I first met Rodney in 2019 at an event, we were introduced, and when he said to me that I graduated from the University of Virginia in 1988, I immediately showed him my ring, and I held on to him for the next 20 minutes without end, wouldn't let anybody get closer. And then I learned that he was expecting or hoping to run for public office to the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors. And we talked much more about that, since I too had at one point run for office and was a public servant. And much of that had begun back on grounds at UVA back in 1965, when I first arrived. Of course, in those days, it was a very different university at that time. You know, those were still all male undergrads, except for the schools of nursing and education. We were unfortunately, still at a time of a part of massive resistance that came from Richmond itself. But that was not really a problem for me. I had, as a teenager in Richmond, tried to desegregate restaurants there, had been arrested. I had learned some skills from SNC, who had come to Richmond to train some of us as teenagers. And we did meet some difficulties. But by the time I was able to come to UVA with the encouragement of our school counselors, because we had grades and scores, UVA would be a piece of cake. So I just want to thank you all who are here, to thank Walter Alcorn, who's also joining us here tonight, as Rodney's great friend, whom he also met in 1988, and with whom he serves now with the Board of Supervisors. It's a very exciting evening for me.
Thank you, David. And now we're turning it over to our wonderful moderator Sly Mata to start the conversation. Thank you, Sly.
Always, always, and happy and excited to be here. I'm going to ask my two guests of honor to go ahead and turn on their cameras, so we can get a great conversation going tonight. Let me introduce myself again. Sly Mata, pronouncer he, him, and his. I serve as the Director of Diversity Education here at the University of Virginia. And I would say I was pleased and humbled to have to moderate this discussion today between these two amazing individuals. We're just going to jump right on in. So I have a list of questions, and we are going to play it off here, play by the cuff. And we're going to go by, we're just going to have some fun tonight. So David, Walter, I mean, sorry Rodney and Walter. Throw it out there, what brought you to UVA? Think about, think back to those, a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago. But think back to what was it that said, "UVA is where I need to be at"? Let's start there.
Okay, do you want to go first, Walter, or?
Mine's less interesting, but I'll throw it out there.
Yeah, go ahead.
So my family actually was living in Nashville, Tennessee, that's where I went to high school. But my family had lived in Virginia earlier in life, earlier in my life. And I was born in Richmond, lived in Roanoke. And actually, one of the things that brought me back to UVA was the roots that my family had there. I also had an older brother and older sister that went to UVA. And so that was, it was always sort of on my radar as a great place to go. Yours, I told you Rodney, yours is going to be more interesting.
No, it's fine, Walter, that's perfect. So let me explain a couple of things. One, I grew up in the city of Alexandria with my grandparents. So one evening, I was in the fifth grade at the time. My grandmother had pulled out these different placemat settings. So there was a picture of Melbourne, and there was a picture of the state Capitol. There was a picture of the lighthouse in Virginia. And then there was this one that had the University of Virginia on it. It had the rotunda and the lawn, and I remember looking at the picture with my grandmother, and I said, "That place is beautiful." And my grandmother said something to the effect of, "You can go there." And I remember saying, "Yeah, Grammy, I'm going to go there." And I go to my fifth grade teacher the next day, and I explained to her that my grandmother and I had talked about my going to the University of Virginia. And she goes, "Rodney, I'll need to talk to you after class." So after class, she pulls me aside, and she's very specific. She goes, "It's very possible if you go to UVA, but you've got to think about this now. You've got to make sure your grades are good, the activities that you're involved in are important. You've got to figure out how to differentiate yourself." And I say, "Excuse me?", and she explained to me, activities, sports, others. She made it clear that these are things that you're going to have to think about in order to go to the University of Virginia. So I fast forward to my senior year, talking to my guidance counselor. He's like, "Where do you want to go to college?" And I says, "I want to go to the University of Virginia." And she goes, "Okay, are there any other schools?" And I said, "No, that's the only, that's the only one I want to go to." And she goes, "I think you might need to apply to a couple of others." So I ended up obviously applying to UVA. I get accepted, and I'll say, this is probably one of the most interesting things. We get accepted, and then we get the letters to come down for spring fling. So spring fling is an opportunity for students who are thinking about coming to the university to get exposure to the university. And they have a specialized program where they would bring in minority students, and they would have a pretty much an all-day program. So we're in the auditorium at Cavill. We're sitting, talking, and then Dean Canterbury, who was the dean of admissions at the time, comes up and says, "I want to bring down the president of the Black Student Alliance." He comes down, and he basically says, "This place is horrid for minority students. It is racist, there are fraternities that put blackface on, sororities that do that as well. You shouldn't send your kids here." And there's a room full, again, of students and their parents trying to make the decision about the University of Virginia. And Louis makes this statement, and I think Dean Canterbury just got a little flustered. So he basically goes, "We're going to move to the tours now." So he basically broke us all up into like little tour groups. And we leave Cavill, and we walk straight down the east side of the lawn, across the rotunda, and then down the west side to the very last room. So it's room 55. And they knock on the door, and Rodney Akers shows up. Rodney is Vice President of Student Council. I forgot, he's African-American, he's Vice President of Student Council. He lives on the lawn, obviously. He's going off to Harvard Law School, and he says, "If you work hard, you can be successful here. You can be like me. I was able to do all these things here at the university." So it was a real contrast for me to hear what Louis said, and then to hear what Rodney said. And the thing for me is that Rodney's words really resonated. And I knew, kind of went kind of to a low place after I heard what Louis said, but then I went back up with Rodney. And I made the decision right after that portion of the tour that I was committed to coming to the University of Virginia.
I think it's interesting, you know, your beginnings of the idea of UVA mirrors many of our current students now. You know, in terms of fellowship with their family to really figure out if this is the right place. And then like Rodney, like you mentioned, hearing both the goods and the challenges at any university, not just here at UVA.
Right.
So what started with aspiration, ended with application, ended with you all both being here. Talk about that experience, and tell me how it may mirror some of the current students' experiences today.
Well, I'll jump in. Again, the, you know, I mentioned I grew up mostly in Nashville, Tennessee, or at least through grade school and secondary school, high school. But I did, I did have roots back in Virginia. My father actually had been a school superintendent, been the school superintendent in Chesterfield County during the time of massive resistance. In fact, he desegregated the Chesterfield County schools, and then a few years later, the Roanoke City Schools, which were massively intense times, you know, for the community, certainly for our family. It left, it left a real imprint on me and my family, my brothers and sisters growing up. It really was a defining time, in almost a time of looking at good versus evil. You know, it really was. And so I kind of had a little bit of a, I would almost call it a hyper-political view of politics and race. And I grew up in Nashville, and I'm thinking, "I'm going to go to the University of Virginia, where a lot of smart people, you know, reflective people, and I'm going to get out of the South." And what I discovered, you know, I was 17 years old, whatever. You know, what I discovered when I came to UVA, I was in a different South. I was, you know, I went from Nashville, which was, you know, kind of a little bit international and forward-looking and kind of optimistic, you know, to what shocked me about UVA, and it really kind of turned me into a little bit of a rebel for a while, was basically the backwards-looking, the, you know, the Civil War. I mean, like, I never thought that much about the Civil War at all, and here it was, you know, in our face. And like, why are we talking about this? You know, why are we, why are we celebrating, you know, this period in history and all the crazy bad things that come along with that? I mean, obviously, you know, the right side won the Civil War. But it was, it made me quite, it was a shock. And it did take a while for me to adjust at UVA. In my first, you know, few weeks and months at UVA, we're pretty uncomfortable. But I obviously found my place.
I have to say, Walter, that, you know, you've mentioned several times, you know, you'll start speaking and say, you know, "I don't have much to say, but I'm going to say this." But I have to say that your comparison of UVA to a different type of South is the current students' experiences. You know, they see the closeness to Washington DC. Then once they get here and see the culture, the community, the dialect, they say, "Wait a minute, where am I at again?" And it's a brand-new experience and one that they learn from. Rodney, feel free to say to the way, what was it like for you when you got here?
Yeah.
Across the grounds and looking around?
Yeah, so I mentioned I grew up in the city of Alexandria. So I graduated from TC Williams High School, and TC was a pretty integrated school. So there were students from all different nationalities, ethnicities, races. And the one thing, I was really active in student government in high school as well. So I was, you know, able to get out and talk to lots of different people. And for me, I appreciated that. And I will say that one of the hardest things about UVA when I first came in was I noticed the very first day, when I went to the cafeteria, and you go through the line of the cafeteria, and you have to decide where you're going to sit. And so I had my tray, and I started walking out, and I could notice all the students separated, almost by race. So white students were in one area, African-American students were in another, Asian, Hispanic. No one, no one sat, no one sat with each other. And to me, that was like a gut punch, because for me, it's like, I would have never thought about that. I mean, before, when I was in high school, I'd sit with whomever I was talking to or people. I knew people in all the different groups. So it became pretty clear to me that I had to make a decision. And that very first day, I had to make a decision. And what I did was, I saw someone who I knew, who had just popped out of the line, and they happened to be white. I ended up sitting with them and having my dinner. So I made it a point to just not try to separate myself, just to be separating myself, because that just wasn't me, that wasn't who I was. And I think a lot of students, I think, conform to that, because that was what people expected them to do. And I think, you know, ultimately, you've got to be true to yourself. I mean, I think in every aspect of your life, and I know this is hard, and this is the challenge, and this is the thing that I appreciate so much about Walter, is that he and I have so many shared values, and one of those shared values is we appreciate and value diversity. We understand the importance of it. And meeting people where they are, talking to everyone, that was always a part of who Walter was and is. And I just, you know, really appreciate, you know, having the opportunity to meet him. And then I've met so many other people who have become friends of mine from UVA as well. But Walter is by far my closest friend from the University of Virginia, just from the experience that we had together and just thinking through the similarities in our thought process. And even though we don't look the same, which I think people might, you know, probably find this kind of crazy for me to say, but Walter is my brother. I call Walter my brother, I've called him my brother for almost 30 years. And it's, you know, it's important that we, you know, again, be true to ourselves and think about when we're put in those, into those places where we have to make a critical decision. Don't be forced to do something that's not true to you. And that's what I hope, you know, others are doing at the university and then thinking about that as well.
That is what we strive for, you know, should a student make that decision? I want to sit by those that look like me or sound like me.
Yep.
But I'll be, so that'd be your decision.
Yep.
But let's not make that your only decision, your only choice.
That's right.
We want to make it, so if that's where you choose, by all means, we're going to support you on that. But we want you to have other options as well, you know.
Right.
So I'm glad that you, I'm glad that you mentioned the friendship between you and Walter. Let's go back, let's go back, how, where, how did this friendship begin? You know, because getting to know you two over the last two weeks is obvious. It is really obvious, and it is great to see. But tell me, where did it begin? And all these years later, friendships are hard to sustain. How have you sustained friendships with each other over these years?
Well, it started actually on the lawn, at a table on the lawn, that I was staffing for the Young Democrats. And I literally walked up to Rodney, like I'd walked up to, I don't know, probably several dozen other people that morning, and said, "Do you want to join the Young Democrats?" And he said, "Oh." And basically, you know, we've pretty much been friends ever since. But that's a great question, Sly, and I do want to answer it. But I got to say, one of the thing about, one thing about Rodney that struck me from almost the get-go, and it's something, you know, when you were talking about going into that lunchroom the first day.
Yep.
I wasn't sure exactly where you were going to go with this, but Rodney is somebody that he always has his eye out on other people. So if there's somebody in the room, if there's somebody on the street, there's somebody anywhere that needs help, that needs attention, Rodney's on it. He basically, he is the Good Samaritan, truly. And that's something that, you know, it's a trait that I aspire to, you know, try to teach my kids to be that way. But I think it just comes naturally to you, I don't know.
You're not far behind, mister, don't even try that. This guy is also very committed to those in need. And I can say, I cannot imagine not having him on the Board of Supervisors. The crazy thing is, I know I shouldn't pivot here, but I got to make this point, that Walter and I are together sometimes on a little island. And the beauty of it is, we will not retreat just because we don't have others that are there with us. We are going to push no matter what, we're going to articulate as long and as hard as we have to make the points that need to be made, and to try to help, as Walter said, try to help those who might not be helped. Because the decisions that we make, it's kind of a crazy thing to think about. But in local government, the decisions that you make impact people's lives in a very, very demonstrative way. And you think about schools, you think about human services. And one of the things that Walter and I are working on together is our workforce development, and really trying to figure out how we help bring people up with skills and certifications and training, and get them into higher-paid employment. And you would think that these things would be easy to do, and they are not. They are extraordinarily difficult. And we both have a passion for it, and we both have a commitment to it. And we want to hopefully transform some lives in the process.
Yeah, and Sly, to go back to your question, I think Rodney and I have been able to keep up our friendship, because in many ways, our paths, our careers anyway, have continued to overlap. So both in terms of, well, mainly through Fairfax County. We both served on the Fairfax County Planning Commission, and for an overlap for several years there together. And then we were both on the Park Authority Board. So, you know, we've had similar experience. We both, at different times, worked in a supervisor's office, you know, the same positions that we hold now. We benefited from that as aids to those supervisors. So, you know, Kate Hanley for me, Jerry Connolly for you. And I think that really has, that kind of proximity has really helped us keep our friendship going.
You know, I think back to some of the challenges that you may both have faced, both individually, professionally, and being able to have that friendship, to lean on, to have counsel, to have fellowship. And I mention that because many of our students today, sometimes they forget the value of friendships. You know, they're very major-oriented, they want to get in, they want to get out. Talk to me about the value that the friendship has had on you over these years in terms of not just the professional aspirations or the professional associations, but the interpersonal as well, the personal challenges that you have faced, that knowing I have somebody, I have an ally, a friend that I can follow, and talk to me about.
Yeah. That is. Yeah, yeah, I'll share something. This is something that not many people know, Walter does know. So our fourth year, we both lived on the lawn. Walter lived in room 49, I lived in room 55. So we were separated by about four rooms approximately, along the west side of the lawn. West is best, right, Walter?
West is best.
So one night, and I don't remember exactly when, but I heard outside my door, I think it were, there were two young men, and they were screaming some pretty bad things through my door, and they were trying to get me to open the door, and they were banging on it. And I think they were drunk, I assume they were drunk. But they were using some racial epithets and saying some not-so-kind things. And I'm awake, it's probably around 1:00 AM. I'm awake, and I'm sitting on the edge of my bed, and I'm trying to decide what I should do. And I had a moment where I had a lot of anger that kind of swelled up in me, and I thought maybe I should go out and maybe try to, you know, take my little poker and just kind of swing at the guys, just to get them to stop doing what they were doing. But as I sat there, and I think back to my grandparents, and I mentioned my grandmother earlier, I would not be able to tell her that I'd gone out and caused harm to two young men, because they were saying things that were not kind to me. So I sat on the bed, and I composed myself, and they eventually went away. So the next morning, I got up, and I went straight to Walter. And I says, "Walter, I got to tell you what happened. I got to tell you what happened to me last night." And he was furious, because I didn't call him. He was like, "Why didn't you call me? Why didn't you tell me that this was happening?" And I said, "Walter." I took everything I had to keep myself from doing something that would have been probably, you know, irreparable. So thankfully, I was able not to do that, and thankfully, I was able to go talk to Walter and basically process it out, because it was a heavy weight on me when I woke up that next morning. And he was kind enough to process it with me. But what he also did, which I found out later, is he spoke to the provost and told him about this story. And when I went to meet with him on a separate matter, it wasn't even like I was going to go talk to him about this. He knew what had happened, and he said, "Rodney, if you need anything, if there's something that we can do, we're here for you." So it meant a lot. I mean, I wasn't expecting anybody to do anything, but I think just having Walter there for me to kind of process it out and to talk about it was really, really helpful, and it made a difference. So again, Walter, thank you, thank you.
Rodney, you don't need to thank me for that. I mean, you're too kind, you're too kind. I mean, and this just shows Rodney's character. I mean, this story right here, you know, what he, what he went through. And then Rodney somehow turns it around to thank somebody else for that, after experiencing something like that. And Rodney, there is, there are some other folks, I think you may know this, that I also talked to afterwards. My story is not as giving, but certainly with, yeah, I did know we had some other fellow Lonnies, Steve Morales, Scott Jones.
Yep.
We all knew, we found, I made sure they know, and they knew about it.
Yep.
And we all had our eyes out from then on. And we were not going to let something like that happen again, if we had anything to do about it. So, but that was, yeah, there was, that was traumatic, that was traumatic for me, and I wasn't even there. So Rodney, I can only imagine what, you know, what it was like for you.
Thank you.
And Rodney, even as you are describing it, it's unfortunate that I can't imagine. You know, I can sit there, I can imagine you sitting there trying to remind yourself, and I mentioned it today, that earlier speech that I gave, of you have to remember who you are and whose you are.
Yeah.
Because you can make certain decisions all through your life dramatically, and probably cannot be reversed, you know.
Right.
So let's talk about that for a little bit. Whether it's in the professional world or in a personal world, there are going to be decisions to make that may go against your values, that may go against your culture, the way you've been raised, or just best business practices. But there may be an outcome that may be sought after. How do you balance that type of conundrum? In terms of making the decision that gives an outcome that some will be favorable of, but you're not okay with it, versus staying true to yourself and working through the process and finding a different outcome?
Yeah, I may have alluded to this a little bit earlier, but I mentioned that Walter and I are sometimes on an island. We have nine members of the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors that are Democrats, and we have one member that's a Republican, so it's a democratically-led Board of Supervisors. But we acknowledge that there are going to be times when the member who happens to be from a different party might have ideas that make sense and that we can support. And we have been pretty clear on stepping out and showing that support. And that's not always something that, how do I say this delicately? It's not always something that would be expected of those who are in the majority. But Walter and I are consistently kind of faced with some decisions where we will vote. But Walter and I are consistently kind of faced with some decisions where we will vote no. And we will end up voting with that other member who happens to be from a different party. Because it's the right thing to do. I I I think when I look at the role that I'm in. I think very strategically about when I get up in the morning and I look at the, look in the mirror and I'm shaving. I gotta be comfortable that I've made the right decision. I think about that for all the decisions that we have coming before the board. And if it means I have to do something different than the majority. Then I'm comfortable with that. I'm I'm okay with that. And I think this is something that young people, I know this is hard. This is where you really have to dig deep. And I think once you've done that, as Walter talked about, some of the things that he was involved in on the lawn. Many, many years ago, once you've done that, it becomes a part of your core, it becomes a part of who you are. It's like in your ethos and I feel comfortable that I can say no and I can do what I think is right. And I think that's probably the same for Walter as well.
Yeah, I mean, I I think Rodney's really coming from a place of more coming from ideals. And and you know, these principles that that he lives by. Frankly, I think sometimes I'm coming at it more just as a contrarian. So, you know, and and maybe just coming a little more skeptical about something. So but again, even though we're coming from sometimes different places. We often arrive at the same result, the same endpoint. And and it and it is important. I mean, one of the things, one of the things that that I certainly learned at UVA was. You know, the end don't justify the means and I guess I knew that beforehand, but but you know. Different people and and I we saw this at UVA, but different people are motivated by different things. And 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 I think we all need to respect that. But also it's a calling for us to look into ourselves and understand what motivates us. And are those what we wanna be motivated by? So that's that's something that certainly I I I spent time at UVA and and learned based on my experiences there.
And I would I would just add one more thing here too, and that is, you know, being of service and trying to help others. Is really foundationally a part of pretty much all the things that we we do. And I can remember even when Walter was writing for the Cavalier Daily. His commitment to making sure that the stories of women who had been raped were told. And I just remember having conversations with Walter about some of these stories. And I even thinking about it now, it's it's gut wrenching and difficult. And Walter was able to get these young ladies to tell their story. And to humanize it in a way that there was no shame. And that he was trusted, these women trusted him with their stories. And I just think that was a powerful, powerful thing that he did while he was at at the university. One of the things I most admired, and I I don't think I've even said this to you, Walter, that that this, that reporting was so important. And I think was so difficult to read, but people had to know. People had to know and that's the only way you could change is that you have to, you have to expose the that thing that's in the dark. You have to bring the light to it and and you you did that with those stories, Walter. So thank you again for that.
So for the audience, please start getting your questions ready. This will be the last question that out there out there before. Before we start taking questions via the chat box and via submission. You know, whether it is sitting on the edge of your bed, whether or not to do a confrontation. It is, you know, trying to get the trust to tell somebody's story of anguish and lots of hope at times. There's something that has driven the both of you. There's something that has driven the both of you that have said, let me make it through this. And I'll be ready for the next. So talk to me about what has sustained his passion, you know, because we've talked about the successes. But I'm pretty sure we can talk about some letdowns as well throughout life that you've encountered or those challenges. But those walls, those walls were still trying to get over, you know, what sustains that passion, that hope for both of you today?
I think one of the things for me is is service, service to community, service to the public. I mean, that 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 motivates me and you know, it always has. I I I've struggled with things that I've done in life professionally and otherwise. That that don't have that service angle to them. It it to me, without that, it's it's hard for me to be motivated to to do some things for very long. Also, you know, service to family. I mean, it's it's service in a number of different areas. But but certainly I've experienced my set of failures politically, starting at UVA. Where I couldn't get elected president of the student council. Rodney could get elected vice president of the student council. I couldn't get elected. So that was, but it's always been true. Rodney's always been a better vote getter than I have. So that's, there's nothing new about that.
That's too funny, Walter. What Walter fails to let you know is that in the Board of Supervisors race. When the tallies were done, both for my district and his district, he beat me out just by about point. Five percent, I believe. So Walter said, I got more votes than you, which was true. He did. So, uh, uh, yeah, that's too funny, Walter. Now, I think I agree with Walter. It's about service and helping others. I mentioned my grandmother and everything harkens back to her only because she showed and demonstrated to me. The value and commitment that she had to her community. She was so engaged and supporting and helping those who were less fortunate and she herself. And this is, this is kind of a weird thing to say. My grandmother did not have significant means. We had a pretty austere lifestyle, but she gave what little she had, she gave to so many others. And for me to see that, it leaves an indelible impression on me. And I know that I've been blessed in so many ways and I wanna make sure I kinda help others. And one of the really big initiatives that I mentioned that Walter and I have been very focused on is trying to help. Some of the individuals in my district in particular, and that will be hopefully spreading this across the rest of the county. Is to help lift them up because they're in very difficult circumstances. The pandemic really shone a pretty big light on the hardships for Latinx community. And then also for our African American community. And we know that these situations can be improved if people can get higher paid jobs. And how do we help them do that, you know, upskilling and certifications? Getting them into the trades, getting them into the medical positions, helping them get access to technology. And the only way that that's gonna happen is if we bring those services directly to them. And we figured a way to do that in my district and we're gonna test it out. And if we can show efficacy, that this model can work. I would hope that we'd be able to have it go into other parts of the county in the future. And I'm just delighted, just delighted to be able to help the residents who have been left behind. I mean, this county is one of the wealthiest counties in the nation. And Walter can attest to this. I worked in economic development for twenty one years. I helped recruit some of the largest companies to this county. I could not recruit those companies to my own community because, because they wanted to be in the north. And the western parts of Fairfax County, so Tyson's, Reston and Herndon, not on Richmond Highway, not in this area that doesn't have. Comparable companies, suppliers or customers. So we've gotta do something. There's like an intervention that we have to undertake to make things change. And that's kind of the focus here. And I really believe that in the end, we're gonna hopefully change the trajectory of a number of folks' lives. And really hopefully eliminate some of this cycling that we see from generation to generation. And then if I'm to answer the question, and I apologize, the last part of it. Yeah, not always being successful in everything that we do. The very first election, Walter, I don't know if I told you, the very first election I ever ran for was in eighth grade. And it was for a student council seat. I lost to a young lady, very sweet, a friend of mine as well. I lost to her and I realized if I'm gonna run again, I just gotta work a little bit harder. So that's the ethos, like in my head, whenever I, if I'm gonna run again, I gotta work just a little bit harder. So like in student council, gotta work a little bit harder.
That's the last race you lost.
That's correct. That is correct.
Several questions. I do want to say, Rodney, I'm glad you just mentioned pandemic at a, you know, all I was at. Somebody I mentioned, since the pandemic pandemic is over. What do you mean the pandemic is over?
It's not over.
Not for me or my family, my community. So very glad that you mentioned that for some, you know, sometimes we may forget. Sometimes we need reminders that although our life is cheery and the sun is up, for some of us, it may be a rainy day for them. So thank you for that. Several questions. Let me just go ahead and choose one out of several. Let's go back to UVA. Were there any particular UVA moments, meaning large social moments or events on grounds? That stand out to them or were formative for them? And I would also say, was there any smaller events that happened that did not get the public's attention? That still stood out to you and is formative to you?
Yeah, for me, there probably, there there were a couple and they all involve protests. I mean, October eleventh, I think nineteen eighty five, on the lawn, we had a thousand people. Show up actually in the amphitheater and then march up the lawn against apartheid. And that was right after that summer, it was all over the network news all summer, the violence in South Africa. And that was the beginning of really several years of anti apartheid and divestment activism. That that I was a part of, but that that really, that really sort of put it into second gear. And I I remember a couple others that Rodney, you and I were both involved in. But I don't know. For you, what were yours, Rodney?
Yeah, I I think I'll mention one that's kind of small, which is kind of interesting. So my third year, I served on the Appropriations Committee for Student Council. So this is the body that would appropriate funds to different student organizations. And there was one of the organizations that was in my portfolio. And I'm apologizing because I think this was the name of the organization before. I don't think it's the name it is today. But the Lesbian and Gay Student Union is what it was called previously. So that group had a young man who was the president. So I called him up and said, you know, my name is Rodney Lusk. I'm serving on the Appropriations Committee. I need to kind of sit down with you and go over your budget so that we can get you appropriations and funds for your next year. And I said, would you be willing to meet me at Peabody Hall? And he said, uh, no, I can't meet you at Peabody Hall. And I says, um, okay, is there somewhere else you would like to meet? And he goes, yes, I I definitely need to meet somewhere else. And I says, is there a particular reason why? And he says, yes, there were a bunch of fraternity guys who were stalking me around the university. And every time they see me, they start throwing rocks and and bricks and all kinds of things at me. And I was just like, are you serious? And he goes, yes. I could not believe it. I literally, when he said that, I could not believe it. And I says, okay, where would you like to meet? And he says, can you meet me at a church off grounds? And I said, I'll meet you wherever you like and I'll be there whatever time works for you. So that's when I really knew, I mean, I knew that there were problems with some of the fraternities and some of these different groups. But this was where it became pretty apparent and it was it was difficult. To even imagine that someone was going through that. Again, so I, your point earlier, you don't really know what circumstances, what situations people are going through. And how they're dealing with it, how they're processing it, but you gotta accept them where they are and you've gotta try to help them when you can. And I did spend some time with them and I apologized for the treatment they was getting. And I said, if there's anything I can do, please let me know. But we ended, we ended up getting the the funding that they needed to run the organization for the next year. But it was just difficult to think that this was a student at the university who would not come on to the central grounds. Because he was afraid that someone was gonna throw rock at the brick.
Let me just throw out one other, one other thing that comes to mind, a very, very different vein. But I, after I lost my race for president of student council, the second time, actually ran twice. I lost both times. But after the second time, I did something with Andy Metcalf. We actually, we resurrected the Yellow Journal. This was back in nineteen eighty seven, Humor Magazine. And and one of the things I I still remember about that, that was, that was, that was, that was a lot of fun, a lot of work. But but I remember, you know, this was when publications like that, you basically, in the basement of Peabody Hall, you're putting. You know, you're laying everything out. It's all manual. And and this kid walks in, first year kid, and basically says, oh, you know, can I help? I'm an illustrator. And so he starts cranking out these cartoons that were just amazing. I mean, the kid's talent was just going nuts, kind of clay with, and I think actually he's a professor, an art professor out west somewhere. At this point, but but you know, that kind of experience at UVA where somebody can just walk in. And is just, you know, has such incredible talent and capabilities. And he would have never known that, you know, just he he just walks in and just grabs a pen and just starts going nuts. So that also.
Walter, I think I remember that he did something with a number of fellow lawn residents. Who I believe the honor committee chair, the judiciary committee chair, student council, student council vice president of services and projects. He made a bobblehead of each of us and published that in the Yellow Journal. I do remember that as well.
Yeah, he also did a good satire of a judicial decision about Monroe Hall, you know, popping out their windows and propping the doors open. Comparing the judiciary committee, the chairman, Dan Adler, to Chairman Mao. That was amazing. It's just incredible satire and talent.
I am loving this. I'm loving just seeing two friends going back to back with each other. One last question, Kim, I'm gonna queue you up in a couple minutes. One last question that we'll post out there is, what is the most difficult part of serving in a local elected office? But what gets you over that difficult part?
Yeah, I mean, I'll say for me personally, this happens for all the board members. If there's a fatality in their district, you get a phone call and the phone call is the commander for that particular police district. Where that fatality occurs or incident occurs. And at any time, day, night, I'll get a phone call and I'll look at, and when I see the commander on there, I know it's gonna be bad news. So every single time I take it and Walter and I just got to a place in our first year. Where I got four calls, one each month, January, February, March, April. Where we had a pedestrian fatality on Richmond Highway. So someone's just trying to cross the street. And they get run over by a car and die. And to me, that's that's a senseless and pointless way for someone to die. So we've been working feverishly over the last few years to improve pedestrian safety, look for ways to use technology. To get better lighting. We've, we've looked at this issue and we are continuing, continuing to find ways to to solve it. And I think in our roles, you know, that that's the important. That's the important role that we can play is in solving these difficult infection problems. And if we work together, and I'll say Walter, which I appreciate, we have co-authored a number of board matters. And the beauty is, when we co-author them and we present them jointly, it gives it a little more weight. But it also, you know. But it also, you know, I think gets a little more attention by our colleagues on the board. And then the last thing I'll say, which Walter is gonna probably want to add to as well, is that we have been really focused on police reform. We've been looking at ways to increase tran- transparency, increase accountability. And this has been a mission that I've been trying to lead on the board. This is a role that I serve as the chair of the Public Safety Committee. And um when I first accepted this role, I thought it was going to be kind of a sleepy committee because that's where I was told that, you know, you can come in. And this committee had like one meeting the year before, the whole year it had one meeting. And then all of a sudden, George Floyd happens, and then we've got, you know, demonstrations in the community. And we know that my committee's got to now get a whole bunch of meetings. I had to, I had to find like six meetings um for the remainder of the year in twenty twenty. And then we did three community meetings on top of that. So we did nine meetings in the year I was supposed to do just one. But the signature, I think the signature thing that Walter and I got to do is we convinced the county to do a co-responder model. So if there's a behavioral health issue connected to a nine-one-one dispatch call, then we need and and require that the police are accompanied with someone from the Community Services Board to handle the mental health or the substance abuse side of that equation. And what we anticipate over time is that we'll get to a place where you won't need to send the police. If you can determine that the call is just behavioral health in nature, there's no threat to the individual, there's no threat to others. Then all you need to send, and we would say, is a clinician. Or you could send, I think Walter and I talked about this as well, a paramedic or someone who can help them, provide them with the assistance that they need. Because we've seen in so many of these instances, instances where the police go out. And unfortunately, the outcome is one where they use excessive force and that causes injury or death um to the resident. And we, we don't want that here in in Fairfax County.
Yeah, and let me just add on to that. Rodney's right on on all that and and you know, hi- his leadership on this issue in particular has been uh really valuable. Um, not just in Fairfax County, but but beyond. I I think this is, this is an area where um I think, I think we actually were leading, at least uh in some ways uh in the region. And um, I mean, really, it the 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 big challenge of any elected official, particularly in a in a board like Fairfax County, it's one point two million people, um, it's a ten-member board. But the county government was there before Rodney and I got elected, and it's gonna be there after we go away. So the institution is there, and part of the trick is using our time when we're, when we have these jobs to try to make sure the institution is serving the people's needs. So you know, with this example of the the first, I mean, we have a first responder system that, you know, we have police and we have fire and rescue, and that's pretty much it. And bringing in this whole third element of a first responder is it takes time, takes work. Uh, but it's clearly needed uh because we're getting, all these calls come in for nine-one-one service that don't involve criminal activity. They don't involve violence.
Right.
And involve physical health, but they involve mental health crises, substance abuse issues, situations. And and our system has to evolve to be able to address that appropriately. And that, and that, that's uh, that's not easy, but it's one of the things that I know motivates me. And I think Rodney too. Um, it's a challenge and, you know, let's make it better.
That's right.
Thank you. Again, you have been my night. Um, again, always great to see you too. Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to you right now.
Thank you very much, um, Sly. And thank you so much to um Rodney and Walter for spending time with us this evening. It's been a very engaging, honest, and impactful discussion. And um just hearing how things were on grounds in the late eighties and you're um fast forward to today. Um, one, one final, final quick thing, if you may, both of you. Um, UVA um aspires to form leaders that serve not only on the local level, like you both do in the Commonwealth, but also um nationwide and even worldwide. And if you could just give one final thought on why this is important. That would be great.
Well, there's no higher calling uh really than, you know, leadership, public leadership, certainly private sector leadership. But but UVA, I know that is, that is one of our traditions at UVA. And and something um I hope continues uh because uh it's, it's not just knowing things, it's applying things and providing leadership to make the world a better place that really makes all the difference.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add that, you know, I think about my own daughters, I have two daughters. And responsibility to ensure that they have a place that they can, you know, work in, live in, thrive in. And to making sure we think about this, you know, for for all of us. And the beauty of public service is, as Walter said, it is kind of like a calling in that you are um responsible. You're responsible for the residents who are part of your district or your um area that you represent. And if you're, you know, true to the position, you're gonna do everything you can to ensure that they have an improvement in their life. And that the only way you do that is that you get out and you have to witness and see what types of issues there are in the community. And then you've got to think critically and specifically about how you can make changes to improve their life.
Wonderful. Thank you both again. Um, we had a second question come in the chat box. I don't know if we have time for that. It's a um parent of a first year who's also a constituent of Rodney's.
Yes.
And he asked um if UVA um inspired you. I I think you've addressed some of this to some degree, but did UVA inspire you to um go into public service? Um.
Yeah, I mean, I I would probably say I had some desire to be of service just in general. I've done that like in high school, and then when I got to college, I got involved with student government. I was also um uh participatory in Madison House and got to understand some of the human service type issues. And then as vice president of services and projects, the services part was pretty much my favorite because I mean, we got to get engaged in the broader community and to try to, you know, bring um Halloween events and other Christmas events and other activities um to both the students and the residents. So I would say, yeah, I mean, all the things that I got to do at the University of Virginia actually were instructive for my work uh that I've done now for thirty-three years. And so for the last thirty-three years, which is kind of crazy for me to say, my career has been in Fairfax County government all thirty-three years, doing different things. Um, like Walter said, I worked for a member of the board. I worked uh in human services for about five years. I worked in economic development for twenty-one and now three years on the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors. So um, yeah, U- UVA is a great place to train leaders. And I think people bring it with them, but I think it gets further expanded. And I think it gets, you know, in- improved over time because of the university. So I'm I'm grateful for the time that I spent there.
Okay, wonderful. Well, that concludes our program. Thank you to everyone who attended. And we look forward to seeing you um on more virtual programming or in-person events through the UVA Club of Washington. Good night.